No, I don't want to do that. How you doing, Chris? I'm alright. Are you on the agenda tonight, or?
Uh, it looks like there were about eight or nine.
Yeah.
Unless you can pass off your items to someone else.
I'm hanging in there. Has like a good report today?
Oh, good.
Good for you.
Really range from this. There he is.
Work conference?
Everybody ready? Everyone ready? We're, we're red.
Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, September 20th, meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors to Order. Please rise and join me for a flag salute.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Viall.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
And is Director Wenskill excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
On to item four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I will so move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? All of us in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of the Purchasing Department receiving the 2018 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, and Director of Purchasing earning the 2018 Distinguished Service Award.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. As you're well aware, Tacoma Public Schools buys a lot of goods and services. And to meet all of your goals for academic achievement and early learning, partnerships, and safety, it's important that our district spends the taxpayers' funding wisely with reliable vendors at the best prices. So tonight, we get the chance to honor the leader and the team that's looking out for all of our best interests when it comes to procurement. Our purchasing department has won two recent awards. First, a little over twenty years ago, the National Procurement Institute created a program to honor organizations that demonstrate high scores in innovation, professionalism, productivity, e-procurement, and leadership. This year, only two agencies in our state and twenty-six educational organizations across the country earned the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. And for the ninth consecutive year, that award was given to our very own purchasing department. That thing's heavy. As the, as the famous TV pitchman Ron Popeil used to say, but wait, there's more. The Institute for Public Procurement represents more than fifteen thousand professionals from more than three thousand agencies across the US, Canada, and other countries. Each year, the Institute bestows its Distinguished Service Award to a member who has demonstrated original and innovative approaches, who contributed to the success of his or her own organization, and who brought credit to the field of purchasing and procurement. And this year, his picture's on the screen, this prestigious honor went to our very own Director of Purchasing, Steve Demel.
Okay, this was quite a surprise that I got this award, but last month, when I was talking with one of my procurement colleagues, she said to me, "When you retire, I want your job." And I said, "Why is that?" You have such great people. They're awesome. And she was referring to Shari and Paula, who do it all here for Tacoma. So, thank you.
There's, there's, I'm not going to get it right, but there's this little picture circulating on Facebook about being leaders, not about being out in front, but it's about making other people better. So when someone gets recognized for getting an award and they immediately talk about all the people who made it possible, I think that's a sign of leadership. So I just want to thank you all for the hard work and congratulate you again for the recognition. Moving on to item number six, the Superintendent's Report. Start of school update?
Two quick, uh, two quick items. One is that the Cabinet and myself have really tried to get out to all the schools and, you know, to see if we could offer support. And I just want to report that it's been so exciting being in classrooms and to welcome teachers back. And it's, it's difficult to get in there and get all that, get all that work done in such a short amount of time. And I was just blown away by the beauty of our classrooms and how ready they were. And we had students engaged and moving for the first day. So thank you to all our school-based personnel that really worked to get that ready. It was impressive. The second thing is just really want every, the public to know that we have taken heart, your recommendations. And, you know, we know we've got great work to do with right sizing. I think that's a new term that we use for our administration building and the functions that are going on. So we've already had some very specific discussions about how we're going to go about, you know, reducing our expenses so that we can begin to make a cut of our, of our budgets. And, you know, we're not going to do, there's lots of organizations that go and just say thirty percent cut, every department, take a thirty percent cut, and then, you know, it doesn't acknowledge or recognize different departments that are serving different functions. We're not doing that. We're going to look very carefully at the roles and the work of every department and what they're doing, and make thoughtful decisions, and also be really thoughtful. I am invested in being thoughtful about the people because these are all people that have made Tacoma a great district and have worked. And so we want to make sure that we give them every opportunity to secure positions. So I just want the public to know that we are on that. And we're going to do a thoughtful, considerate, creative, innovative job of getting it done.
Any comments or questions from members of the board? Director Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. Building on the Superintendent's comments, I think it would be interesting to see a quadrant that shows most effective programs and most expensive programs. So we can begin to sort out what is moving the needle for our students. Because there are going to be times where expense correlates to achievement, and there are going to be times where expense correlates to waste. And as I've thought about how do we get our heads wrapped around making cuts, that that may be a good place to start programmatically and the staff needed to administer and, and run the programs.
We're also committed, we haven't talked specifically about what it's going to look like, but we do want our public to have input, you know, into the budget and some of those things that they value and that they believe are making a difference. So we will do some, you know, community input in a variety of different ways.
And then, lastly, when we're looking at staffing ratio, I would be interested to see staffing numbers, current staffing numbers, the programs that they support, and then the staffing numbers during the periods of time where there was, where the performance and the achievement in the district wasn't as high. I was looking at, I was refreshing my memory of graduation numbers. And it wasn't that long ago where those graduation numbers were in the fifties and sixties. And so is there a correlation to our increase in student achievement in the way that we're staffed and top to bottom? So administration, building level, support services. Because I think we've taken a comprehensive approach through the Whole Child Initiative. And I would be interested to see perhaps if the achievement i- is correlated to an increase, the right-sized increase. And I think our approach to go at this surgically and not with a hatchet is the right way to do it because there are programs in place that I know may be expensive to run, but they pay dividends and they take people district-wide to administer them. I was, had a conversation with a teacher last week who has taught kindergarten on the east side for a number of years. And she was very appreciative of some of the social-emotional learning tools that she had. And she, and I don't think she realized it as she was describing how she checks in with her students every day to see if they're red, yellow, or green. And that that's the vision of social-emotional learning. And to administer that in an equitable way, district-wide, takes administrators. So I'm interested in those sorts of correlations so that we make really smart decisions about what to keep in place and what to cut.
Director Viall?
It does, it is, it's ineffective to do cross-the-board cuts. When the state went through its worst time, across-the-board cuts were not made. Program by program was looked as to its effectiveness, what it was doing and what it was achieving. And when we finished that process, came out of it in nineteen seventy-six, the Future Shock book that was written said Washington was a leading-edge state. I think it's an opportunity for us to have, when you don't do that, you have a real opportunity to understand what are your most effective and most efficient programs. And as Director Heinz said, some of them may appear to cost more, but they deliver more in terms of how many students are we actually serving? How many students are achieving as a result of these programs that we are running? So costing more doesn't always mean it should be cut. Because we have a lot of programs in this district that we haven't reviewed in a long time. And sometimes there's always a glass half-full and a glass half-empty. And it's maybe sometimes for us to sit back now and to go back and really, and as Director Heinz said, and we both came on this board, it was fifty-four percent graduation rate. And to really see what programs that we have in place at our different schools are really achieving and leading our kids down that path to that graduation rate, and that starts with preschool on through. So I think this is an opportunity for us to do a thoughtful process. I don't like the fact that we have to do it, but it, it may benefit us in the long run. We really understand and get a better understanding of how well we are doing and where we are doing. And maybe we have some programs that we've just had for a long time that it's time for them to be terminated and, and take those dollars and use them to help us through what is going to be, I think, somewhat of a deficit year next year because I really am not confident that our friends at Olympia are going to fully fund education. So this is a thoughtful process. And I think people have talked about an audit. We get an audit every year from the State Auditor's Office. What we really need to do is have a review. And there's a big difference between audit and review. And so I'm asking for a review and, and not an audit. And, and in that review, we will examine everything. Audit is mainly fiscal and somewhat performance and limited to certain items in performance. So we will do, I hope, a thoughtful review of every program, looking at, and I agree with Director Heinz, to look back at what have we done and for how long and what, because we didn't really get rid of a lot of stuff, I don't think. And we can take a look and say, is this really working and isn't it working? And also looking at the number of students that it is serving and are, are they being served efficiently and effectively? And I think those are the things that we want to really look at, are the efficiency of our programs and the effectiveness of our programs. And then move forward and come back and get some public comment. And sometimes, you know, we, we're going to have to make some hard decisions, that's for darn sure. But we can make them based upon the data. We are data-driven, evidence-based school district. And as I sit up there, I will make the decision that I will make on what's best for the kids based on the data and the evidence that we are presented as to what programs that we move forward. And the whole thing will be is that we need to keep moving forward and raising our graduation rates. Because that is, that's what we're all about. And getting our kids ready for a career in college and not destroying that and going backwards. This district cannot afford to go backwards again. Thank you.
Director Leon?
So I'm glad the teachers are going to have a more secure pay. We'll be able to continue attracting really high-quality teachers, keep the high-quality ones we have here that have lots of experience. Just echo, I agree with all the comments that the board members have made so far, so I won't reiterate all of them. But the strategic approach to cuts where they may need to be done is going to take a little bit of, a little bit of time. So it's going to be a process that we'll, we'd like to involve, obviously, everyone at this table, including the teachers, the students, the principals, the staff, and the parents. There's a PTA meeting here next week, so I'd like to hear from some of those leaders as to what they think the right approach might be in the future. And it still may take several months, and we'll have the leadership from Superintendent as to when that process will kind of make its way. So I think that's it. Thank you.
I, I too will echo lots of the comments that have been made. We talked a lot about considering effectiveness and efficiency. With regard to effectiveness, I just think we have our strategic goals and our benchmarks. But thinking about effectiveness in the context of programs, I think, might, it might take, I mean, I'm sure programs already have specific goals annually and things that they're working towards. But I just think, thinking programmatically about effectiveness differently from the way that we think about our benchmarks making progress might take some conversation. And then to add a criteria, I think that we should also consider the stage in implementation that certain things are in. Because when you're designing something new, there's kind of this capacity building and this getting started period where you might need more staff or more resources broadly to get the thing up and running as opposed to when you're in kind of that full implementation and sustainability phase where it's not necessarily the same kind of dedication of resources that it was to get going. So I think we should also think about that, too, where an implementation initiatives or programs are and what they might need two years from now as opposed to what they need right now because they're early in their lifespan. Any other last follow-up from Superintendent on your report? Okay, thank you. So moving on to item seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First, complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments. And, and in some cases, if there's a large number of speakers, time will be limited at the president's discretion. But tonight, given the number of cards we have, you'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll get a one-minute warning when you have one minute left.
First up is Stephen Hemmerich, followed by, I think it's Eric Chenier.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Hemmerich. I live at ninety-two thirty-six South K Street. Our local school is Stafford. And what I was concerned about this evening was my wife, I think some of you may know, is a certificated substitute teacher in the district since, I have the year two thousand. And she went down, or we went down to Stafford on Tuesday. And she was asking, "What's the new rate of pay for substitute teachers?" And we were kind of surprised to find out that there was no increase in pay. And we were told by one of the union negotiating team that the district refused at this time to negotiate pay and said they would put it off until next spring. Okay? Now, that was really disheartening because we were kind of elated because the News Tribune basically indicated in their article that new teachers got a nine-thousand-dollar-a-year raise. Tenured teachers with a master's got an eleven-thousand-dollar-a-year raise. And the top-line teachers, based upon education and experience, got a raise of eighteen thousand dollars. And we read that the professional technical employees got a raise of fourteen percent. And then the ma-, which includes maintenance workers, according to the Tribune. And office professionals got a raise of nineteen percent. Now, I did send a email earlier today to President Cobb, and I didn't get a response yet. So I came down and, you know, I think it's a disservice, you know, to substitute teachers, you know, that they were not considered for a raise at this time. I went online and I was perusing, and I see that the Seattle School District, before their settlement, was paying at a minimum a hundred and ninety days. Okay? And they also get enhanced stick leave, and the top, top pay was two-twenty. And there's other ones that are in that ballpark and some less. I realized I got three minutes, so I went ahead and I wrote down, you know, my thoughts on what substitute teachers do, their education process. And I got five copies, and I shared these with the eight state and representatives that sent letters to you that indicated, "Like you, we highly value the school district and those teachers, classified staff, and administrators are a part of teaching our children." So I'm going to leave the secretary copies of my written statement, which I forwarded to the representatives that have children among the twenty-six thousand kids in this school that rely on substitute teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric? Followed by, um, Eric will be followed by Barb Randall, Seela.
Thank you. Let me introduce myself. My name is Eric Chenier. I'm a former city council member of University Place. Let me kind of make a background and then just get to the point. When I got elected into office, I was told, "Hey, city's going bankrupt." They were talking, "Cut all the staff salaries, cut benefits, raise the taxes on the citizens." My attitude at that point, being elected official, was, "No." Our, our city council, and I demanded it and got it passed, that they took a fifty percent pay cut because it was the right thing to do. Not because, not because it was the political thing to do. It was morally and ethically correct. Right now, I've heard a lot of comments tonight, and I kind of changed some things what I was going to say. But one word I haven't heard tonight is another group of employees, the paraeducators. I have not heard any comment about them. When I hear that the administration, for the, the school district administration is one of the highest in the state, and some of the salaries are ridiculously high in the level of the governor, something's wrong. Something has to be fixed at the administration level. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about cuts. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about hitting different areas. But the paraeducators, they deserve a living wage, just as the teachers deserve a living wage. Just as the classifieds and all employees deserve a living wage. There's a lot of backbreaking work they do. And I'm going to say this, and those that know me very well. If they are not taken care of, and they are cut for any reason, and they tell you to get a hatchet on their jobs, this is not going to be a promise. This is not going to be a threat. This will be a fact. I will go out of my way to find new people for the school board in next year's election. Thank you.
Barb, Barb will be followed by Toby. Sorry.
I thought I was special. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have spoken many times on the hours being cut, our low pay. But today, I want to talk a little bit about the respect that I feel we don't get. I have a paraeducator that called me on Tuesday. She was in tears. She had gone to work that day expecting to work her six-and-a-half hours as usual. But at four hours, her principal called her into the office and sent her home. Her hours had been cut to four hours, but nobody, no one gave her the heads-up that that was going to happen. This is a single mom with three children. She was crying because she didn't know how she was going to feed her children this week. She doesn't know how she's going to pay her rent this week. Without the respect to tell her in advance before the school year started is appalling to me how anybody can treat us like that. I have another paraeducator who was working eight hours last year. She's cut to five-and-a-half hours this year. Continually, 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 you cut her hours. Continually, continually, I take their names out of my list. Forty, fifty people a year leave this district, paraeducators, because they can't make a living wage. That is appalling. You talk about the things that you're going- You talk about the things that you're gonna do. I, I totally agree that you need to look at what's happening here at Central, but you also need to look at how many wonderful and awesome paras you're losing every year. That's loud, isn't it? Sorry. I'm on a roll, and I'm sorry. I've been here for forty-three years, and I'm lucky if I make twenty-two dollars an hour. I have to look and see. Forty-three years, and I'm making barely enough. And yet, I can't even begin to say because I'm gonna cry. We need to have quality paraeducators, just like you need quality teachers. Our paras do things. They catheterize kids, they tube-feed kids. I have a para who hurt his back because of, um, a TLC student. He came back to work after surgery, and they gave him a large student who has seizures every day. He has to literally pick her up off the floor, and his back is out again. And he doesn't know, the doctors don't know, if it'll ever be the same. You need to treat us with respect because we deserve it. Thank you.
Toby, followed by Miriam Ander, I think?
Hi there. My name is Toby, and I'm a product of Tacoma Public Schools. Can you guys hear me? Okay, just making sure. Um, as well as having Tallulah, who's in second grade, and, um, Cataleia, who just started kindergarten today. Um, I was at the board meeting on Monday, and a number of you made mention of, um, how unfortunate some of the tac-, the tactics were, or how disappointing the tactics were that you saw employed during the strike. And I wanted to let you know that I agree with you. I, too, am very disappointed. I'm disappointed that our officials, elected to represent us, the public, were not available in our time of need. I'm disappointed that I was unable to reach you guys via phone, via email, or even coming down and sitting down at the, in the main office. Fill out this paper, Ms. Teresa said. They'll get back to you. I still haven't heard from anybody. Um, I'm disappointed that you misused tools that are meant to communicate essential information to parents, like the robo-calls, the texts, and the emails out to the parents. Um, and it felt kind of icky. It felt like you used them to push your agenda with the most egregious and disgusting one being, being on Wednesday, the twelfth, when you sent a message out to parents inviting teachers to cross the picket line for extra pay if they showed up at school and crossed the strike line. It was shocking, disgusting, and quite off-putting. So, I'm disappointed that a hard situation was managed very poorly on your end, and with every passing day, the deep and profound sense of mistrust grew. On Monday, I also heard many of you talk about mending bridges and moving forward, and I agree with that, too. But just as I teach my kids that when they make a decision or have actions that break the trust of the people around them, they must let their actions speak louder than their words, and they must work to earn it back, I'm looking forward to seeing how you all can do that this year. Um, I want to see you put your desire to mend bridges into action that will inspire the public to trust you. We should all be on the same side. The parents, the teachers, and the school district all what's, want what's right for every student, every day. And we have a huge gap of trust that we need to fill in, and that's gonna take action and dedication. Um, and that starts with how you decide to value the paras, the people that are on the front line supporting every student, every day. And also figuring out the whole cluster hoozie that's going on right now with the busing system, including taking care of our sped kids and getting their immediate transportation needs addressed. Thank you.
Miriam, followed by, uh, Amer Gilder-Aktis. I really apologize if I totally, totally messed up your name. But next is Miriam. Thank you.
Sorry. I, I have a hearing aid and all the clapping, just set it off. Um, I, I don't like to talk, but this is a, supporting the paraeducators is a topic near and dear to me. So, I am Miriam Ander. I am a certified teacher for Tacoma Public Schools. I am a special educate, special ed teacher, and I also have a board certification in behavior analysis. I think I have a pretty good classroom. Um, I would like to thank you for, you know, the strike being ended. I was deeply concerned. There are people in this room who received emails from me. I was so concerned about the loss of special ed teachers if things did not get resolved There's only so many special ed teachers to go around, and I'm on two committees to make sure that we try and retain quality special ed teachers in Tacoma Public Schools. Again, an issue very near and dear to me, and I would be so upset if we started losing quality special ed teachers. So, at current, I am working as a TLC teacher in Tacoma Public Schools. If you guys are not aware, sorry, I said guys, I'm from Chicago, I apologize. Um, TLC stands for Therapeutic Learning Center. I don't know if everybody's aware of that. Um, again, that's a name I don't care for, but that's a conversation for another time. I serve the most needy students in the district, I feel, and they also have a variety of disabilities and extreme behaviors. Um, I am very fortunate. I have two paraeducators, and I know that they can take data, and I know that they can handle extreme behaviors if need be. I am a very lucky teacher right now. Both of my paras have returned to my classroom from last year, which has provided an extreme amount of consistency for my students. They are my lifeline in the classroom. My classroom would not function the way it is, my students would not be happy, my parents would not be happy, which would cause more grievance throughout this whole district if I did not have the paras I had. To give you a hint of what our days are like, the officer standing here knows me, and the officer at the last board meeting that I was at knows me. Um, that should just give you an idea of what my school days are like. I have no choice but to speak out for the paraeducators. Please make the right choice for the paraeducators and increase their wages to an appropriate wage. Thank you.
Amer Hilda, is that correct?
Amer Hilda.
Thank you. Okay, and she's gonna be followed by Suzanne.
Um, hi. So, I just want, I am a para, and I've been working for the district for eight years. And I just want to say that we go over and beyond, um, working with kids. Um, I do work for the Head Start Program. And, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that we are always dedicated to the families, and not only to the kids, to the families, too. But what about us? For example, today, we were promoting assistance to them, and we were promoting, um, ways for them, for, that we support them. And yet, in the back of my mind, I was thinking, wow, I might have to make a trip to the food bank. Eight years invested in the district, only part-time, not even eighteen thousand a year. So, yes, it hurts me, but yet, I'm here. And I'm here to support. I support paras. Think of us. Because without us, there's a whole bunch of empty slots. Teachers need us, and we, we stand united by them, so we feel that we are part of them. So, we are here because we need our, ourselves. Every individual parent needs, has their needs, and we just want to know that we are appreciated also. And I just want to thank you guys for listening, at least listening, to us and consider, I can't even express myself, I wanted to say so much, but have some, um, compassion. Think about those that also give what they can to help you guys be where you are. Thank you.
Suzanne Stewart, followed by Rich Wood.
Hi. My name is Suzanne Stewart. I am a community member, parent, and a teacher in Tacoma. My sons and I are products of Tacoma Public Schools, and I've always been very proud of that. However, I have become increasingly disappointed in the lack of leadership from Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and the members of the school board. As a teacher and a voter, I have no faith in our administration or you as our elected school board. During the strike, you canceled a school board meeting, didn't return calls or emails, and parents, including a pregnant mother, were turned away from cab by a security guard. You distributed misleading and false information to the public. You hid behind your highly-paid spokesperson instead of listening to the community or explaining your own actions. You used district resources to try to turn the community against educators, flailing around, trying one desperate tactic and then another. It made you look ridiculous, and it didn't work. How can we continue to allow this administration to run the district when they have proven themselves to be fiscally irresponsible, untrustworthy, and untruthful? Furthermore, how can we have faith in a school board that has shown a shocking lack of oversight of the budget and extremely poor decision-making? The Tacoma School District has continued to hire more administrators, year after year, at increasingly astronomical salaries. While, until the strike, educator salaries had not kept up with nearby districts, paras and kitchen staff don't make a living wage, and students compete for teacher attention in large classes. We also ask our families to supply basic needs in schools like copy paper and tissues. We just wonder, will toilet paper be next? Meanwhile, Ms. Santorno and her staff make more than the governor. As school board members, your job is not to pander to the administration, but to hold them accountable, to ask questions and demand answers. Tacoma parents, voters, staff, and most importantly, our students deserve better.
Rich Wood, followed by Tracy Miranda.
Uh, hello, President Cobb and school board members. My name is Rich Wood. I'm speaking as a voter and as the spouse of a Tacoma teacher, actually Suzanne, who you just heard from. Uh, both of our sons graduated from Stadium High School, and I'm wearing blue tonight to show solidarity and support for the paras and other hard-working classified staff. I've worked with educators in dozens of school districts, and I've been active in the funding fight for more than two decades, and I know what true student-centered leadership looks like. And I can tell you, we need a major, major change in the central office administration of Tacoma Public Schools. Across the state, school boards and administrators did the right thing this year. They negotiated the competitive professional pay raises that teachers and support professionals need and deserve, and the pay raises that the state funded. They did so based on their available finances and the needs of their students in each community. They managed to do this in wealthy districts, but also communities such as Yakima, where they did not go on strike. In two-hundred-and-eighty of our two-hundred-and-ninety-five school districts, the teachers did not go on strike this year. But here in Tacoma, teachers went on strike for the second time in seven years. Meanwhile, our superintendent and PR, um, people call Tacoma Public Schools a loser in the media, a, a characterization that I find really appalling. Instead of leadership, they gave our community excuses and misinformation, such as the lie, and it is a lie, that teacher pay raises were limited by law to three-point-one percent, or, you know, the constantly changing story about the request for fact-finding. I found that appalling. Instead of negotiating in good faith, as somebody else mentioned, you chose divisive tactics like offering striking teachers bonus pay to cross their own picket lines. Demeaning and disrespecting your teachers and your para-professionals and other hard-working school employees, the ones who actually work with our students, is a bad strategy. I don't know what you were thinking during the teacher contract negotiations because you never explained yourselves. You were largely silent, as was Superintendent Santorno. Again, that's not leadership. You were missing in action while thousands of teachers and supporters walked the picket lines, and nearly thirty thousand students were not in school. I don't know, um, the motivation behind your actions, or why you surrendered your responsibility to unelected central office administrators, which you did. You can rationalize and blame the union or legislators, but you, the board, are the elected officials responsible for what happens in the Tacoma School District. And this is not about rehashing the past, it truly is about moving forward. But you have lost the trust, confidence, and respect of people like me, and your employees, and the students and community. And until that changes, it's impossible to move forward without a radical change at the top. And unless you refuse, and as long as you refuse to accept your own responsibility for the conflict and discord that you have caused, then our students and their teachers will continue to pay the price, and they deserve better. Thank you.
I'm, I'm a parent of two kids from Tacoma Public Schools. One just graduated from Stadium, the other is a junior, and I am also a substitute paraeducator. As for the strike, um, I, too, was very disappointed in the behavior of the board. Uh, I know they got lots of emails and lots of phone calls. I only had one, one board member return my email. It just didn't seem like you guys were hiding, and it wasn't fair to the parents. Uh, when Toby came, I think it was Toby that came to the lobby, and somebody told her that she was impeding business by hanging out in the lobby, and it's like, isn't parents your business and students? That's what I was thinking. Also, um, I definitely agree that, that substitute teachers need a raise, too. Most of the districts around us pay more. As for Seattle, they pay substitute paras about nineteen dollars an hour to start, as a, compared to thirteen in Tacoma. Uh, there's a lot of paras that aren't here tonight because they're working two or three jobs and can't come. I have several friends that, that do that, and you really need to take some of the McCleary money that was set aside for them and give them all raises. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. Moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Motion to adopt.
Motion moved and seconded. Any questions about items on the consent agenda? All those in favor of adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item nine, policy matters. There are no policy matters tonight. Quarterly financial update. Item ten-point-one, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, third quarter financial report.
Good evening. I will just take a minute while, um, Allison Duskins has an opportunity to come on forward. She is our financial analyst, and she will be providing you with our third quarter update. Uh, I think it's important for me to remind you that the third quarter update is actually our May financials, so this is actually many months ago. At this point, we were unable to get this report to you before because we had some, um, uh, budget items that took precedence over what we got on the board agenda, and so this was pushed off. So, we're bringing this to you now.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening, school board. I am here to present the third quarter, uh, financials. So, as Roslyn mentioned, through May thirty-first, uh, we close year-end in, uh, second week of November, just so, uh, you're aware for the next presentation. Uh, today I'm gonna start out with our enrollment numbers. As you can see here on your screen, um, we are twenty-four, we ended the year twenty-four students down from, uh, the previous school year, and then fifty-three off from, uh, where our demographer budgeted. So, we were really close, both on, uh, this year versus last year, as well as our budget, and those numbers came in really close. And looking at, uh, past year's, uh, numbers with the demographer, they were all really close to each other.
And I'll just add to that, Allison. Um, our, our demographer, if we look back at a ten-year history, has done a pretty incredible job of the way he projects our enrollment, and we've been very fortunate in the fact that a lot of our enrollment has been relative- has been relatively stable over a number of years. Uh, his error percentage in predicting our enrollment is less than one percent over a ten-year period.
Next up here is staffing. I know that there's been some, uh, some talk about staffing numbers, and so here is actual staffing numbers from last year. As you can see, this year versus last year in certificated, we are up nine, and in classified, uh, up only six, uh, staffs. And when I look at where that's broken down, the majority of that came from custodians. So, for the beginning of the year, we started off the year about four-point-six million dollars less than we had originally budgeted. Uh, year-end, we're projecting that we'll end the year about seven-point-two million dollars below our intended revenues. The majority of that comes from that built-in eight-point-five-million-dollar capacity that we put in there for any, uh, unexpected grants or revenues that come in. So, the majority of that, like I said, comes from that capacity that we do build in and we expect to see not fully, um, given. As for expenditures, we're expecting to end the year about ten-point-eight million dollars below in expenditures. When we look at that, the majority of that does come from benefits, as well as, um, district supplies. Curriculum and instruction intended to buy a bunch of new curriculum this year and textbooks, and due to some things where they were not able to get exactly what they wanted, we've decided to push that on to the eighteen, nineteen school year. So, the majority of that does come from those two areas. If you'd like to see a breakdown, I also have that as well. We're also projecting to end the year one point, one million dollars below, uh, our ending fund target balance. Here is a five-year history of our revenues and expenditures. As you can see, for the past two years, our, um, expenditures have outpaced our revenues. Uh, there was an intended spend-down on, um, the ending fund balance, and but you can see this here in the chart.
Um, I think that this is a, an important chart to share. Do you have the other two? I think this is probably. So, this is our actual monthly cash balance, and what you see in this is, we call it the cat years. In October, and then again in April, is when we get our primary tax revenues and our primary, uh, revenues from the state in apportionment. And so, we have a, an uptick in revenues, and then it's a slow, steady downward trend. Uh, we're trending right now to end the year with a cash balance of around forty-two and a half million dollars. Uh, that doesn't necessarily equate to what our fund balance is. That's just taking all of our cash reserves and what we have on hand. It doesn't include investments or any of those things. Uh, and so, we're tracking with where we would expect to be based on, um, e- everything that we have done over the last several years. We don't see any anomalies in what we're looking at, and so, we know that we're lower. We've been lower, and we, we intended to be lower, and we're lower, so.
And so, that equates to, um, thirty-nine-point-two-eight days of cash on hand. So, that just basically means, in layman's terms, if we were to lose all revenues today, how, how long would the district be able to sustain itself? So, that is, uh, pretty close to where we were last year, thirty-nine-point-three-six days. And, uh, there are some different, uh, financial health indicators from OSPI and the state, and even with our own internal numbers, where we think we should hit those, um, days of cash on hand.
And I would tell you that when we talk about our fund balance and our ending reserves, we've always talked about, uh, what the Government Finance Officers Association recommends. They say that you should have sixty days cash on hand. We're below that. Um, it, it's, we're not in an unreasonable position, but we're certainly not, you know, modeling best practice according to the government standards.
This last slide is just the same breakdown of where our ending fund balance is, uh, in the different buckets that we assign them to, uh, based on board policy. So, again, uh, as I said in the previous slide, we, uh, will end the year about one million dollars below our intended, uh, ending fund balance.
And that's what we've prepared for you this evening. Any questions for us?
Questions from the board, um, Director Heinz?
Yeah, can you explain why we don't have sixty days cash on hand?
Well, uh, it, it would be a considerable fund balance that we would have to carry in order to do that. So, we're at twenty-eight million dollars is where we're intending to end this year. We would need to have closer to fifty million dollars of cash on hand or, or ending fund balance to do that.
And is there, how do we learn about districts? I would be interested in learning about peer districts to see what level of cash on hand they have, so we can benchmark against them.
We have done a number of benchmarking, um, activities, trying to understand where our fund balance is in relationship to other districts. Uh, when we look at all districts, uh, I, I don't wanna say it's all districts. All districts over ten thousand were the third, uh, in the state. As far as, uh, lowest amount, we're the third lowest. But when we look at the top ten school districts, we're second lowest. Only Kent has a lower fund balance than us.
So, is the explanation that we're spending more, we're keeping less in reserve to spend more now?
Correct. We're spending more on the students that are currently in the system, and we're maintaining a fund balance that's appropriate to provide us with any emergencies and not hoarding cash.
And I believe that's something we've heard in the past from our constituents, is to prioritize. I remember a few years ago when we were trending, uh, to have more reserve, uh, that we heard from the community that they wanted us to invest that money. So, is that the attribution to why we're now less than what would be considered best practice? Because we're trying to invest that money in real time, rather than to the benefit of students now than holding it in reserve?
That's correct. Um, and, and I would ask, I would also add, um, there are policies within districts. Most districts have some kind of reserve requirement policy. This district has a policy that sets the reserve at five percent. Uh, some districts have a, a three or four or five percent reserve requirement, but they far exceed that requirement, so they're holding on to, uh, a cash beyond that. We're running closer to our fiscal reserve limit than other districts, many other districts.
Right, thank you.
Director Yell?
Uh, we had sheltered programs too, that were set up, for what reason or another, I'm not sure, back in the day, that set out, and I remember, we also spent down some of that reserve to put them into where they, uh, belonged within the, um, academic programs under our academic excellence. Is that correct? And that also resulted in the spending down of those high-level reserves that our community wanted to know why we were not spending. Is, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the first slide, in other, um, just where we have enrollment, elementary, middle, high, and other programs, what's captured in other programs? Is that?
So, that's like our open-door programs, Running Start, the fourteen-eighteen programs, um, ALE, the Alternative Learning Experience, yeah.
And then, I just wanna look back to one of Director Heinz's comments. And in relationship to the slide that shows revenues and expenditures, there, like you, you made the comment that we started spending down and consciously, and whatever year that is, where there's, we spent more than our, uh, expenditures are greater than revenues. Is that the, is that the same time period? I'm trying to track the numbers, because this was before my time, so I don't remember the context of the conversation. There's a noticeable shift where we go from fifty-three-point-six-nine, um, days of cash on hand to thirty-nine. Is that, that, those are the same impacts, reflects between these things? Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for the report.
Thank you, Allison.
Item eleven, curriculum and instruction, and there are no curriculum and instruction items tonight. Item twelve, business matters, twelve-point-one, approval of the twenty-eighteen-nineteen contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets, a nonprofit charitable organization.
The deputy superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets campaign for the period of September one, two thousand and eighteen, to August thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, inclusive of the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I will move adoption.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments about this item? All those in favor of adopting item twelve-point-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item thirteen, other business, thirteen-point-one, approval of resolution number two-zero-four-seven to close U.S. Bank Planning and Construction revolving account.
The chief operating officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number two-zero-four-seven to close U.S. Bank account number one-five-three-five-zero-three-four-one-one-seven-eight.
Move adoption.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions about this item? All those in favor of adopting item thirteen-point-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item fourteen, report to the board, there are no reports tonight. And then, item fifteen, board comments or reports? I'll start with, um, Director Leon.
So, I'm, just heard from a lot of constituents, obviously, through this last couple, couple of weeks. Uh, we've commented on many of the, of the heartfelt, um, discussions we've had with people. Um, not all of them, as, as we've heard, uh, have been open discussions. I tried to, um, reach out to some people through email, um, and had a couple of conversations on the phone. So, I look forward to trying to improve upon that and, and improve our communication channels with all of you and support our paraeducators, um, as the time goes forward here, because they are, um, as we all know, a very important part of our team.
Thank you. Director Heinz?
Uh, thank you. I have a question for Chris. With regards to seismic retrofitting, how many unreinforced masonry buildings do we have in the district? Are you aware, I'm putting you on the spot?
I'm not aware of that number, but I can definitely provide you with that number.
Okay. Would you check on the URM to see, um, what we have in our existing infrastructure? And, and then, if we've looked at the cost of retrofitting? I think that for us, um, there's potentially going to be some legislation introduced next year that would allow school districts to go after some funding. I, I don't know if it'll pass, um, and if it doesn't, then, uh, we may want, if we've not thought about how that would fit into a capital bond, making certain that those, uh, URM buildings have been addressed. Thank you.
Director Yell?
I'd like to second, um, Director Heinz's request, having been old enough to live through three major earthquakes and been in one school that suffered major damage in nineteen forty-nine Washington. I'd like to know that same, the answer to that question too. And I know the city did, uh, has done a number of surveys over the years, and we've participated, but if you could get that, I think it would be really helpful, because as we think about, I know we've done retrofits after the earthquakes. The old Geiger School had a big thing on the end of it with big things, but I think it would be behoove us to, um, just have that. I know the fire department may have that data on hand as our emergency management coordinators also. But I, I would like to see that, because that's been something that has been of concern to me. I think just having, you know, grown up here and indulged in going through the three major earthquakes of nineteen forty-nine, nineteen sixty-five, and two thousand and one, it was not, um, and it's not a question if we're gonna have earthquakes, major earthquakes, it's, it's a question of when. And I, and I know that we have worked hard on preparedness, so perhaps we have kind of gotten maybe a little bit away from that and come back to that and take a look at, not only what are we doing on retrofitting of our buildings, but are we prepared for that three days, that seventy-two hours to five days that I learned when I went, as mayor, went through FEMA training, to be on our own with no help? And that we may be, some of our kids may be actually stuck at schools on different parts of the city because of bridges collapse and things like that. So that we really look at emergency preparedness, and are we ready? Like water and sanitation supplies and things like that, and where should they be located? And how, how should we, um, you know, make sure that we have food and water and things like that for the kids? So, I'm, I'm kind of a, I'm not an expert like Scotty is, but I'm a supporter on it and have had to, um, be in charge of some things at the city where we really did go through that and take a look at. And basically, all of us are, I think, I certainly don't have seventy-two hours of water in our house, and we need to do that, and we've talked about that. So, not only just as an organization, but we also might go back and work with the kids again a little bit on the schools, about what you can do to be prepared at home. So, that's something I'd like to see us get a little bit more serious about. Thank you. I don't have any report, other than I went to the Audit and Finance Committee yesterday and looked at the same numbers that we saw today and, uh, and just talked about where we are as a school district. And, uh, the interesting thing was, um, how much work that Paul Walker does, our internal auditor, that basically cleans up things and does a lot of work that keeps us out of the state auditors', uh, reports. And that's why we get clean audits, and they, now they're looking at contracts. One thing that was interesting is, um, and Chris, I know you're aware of this, that they're helping you and making sure that really, looking at our contracts and what our contracts say, and making sure that we're not paying contractors before we actually review and making sure that they have met the criteria for being paid. And we've, uh, always had a thing of wanting to pay our contractors on time, so we're gonna spend a little bit more time in terms of making sure that they have fulfilled the contract before they are paid, so I was impressed with that. So, thank you.
I don't have much of a report. I do have one, um, question for Roslin, sorry, um, as a follow-up to, um, something that was triggered from one of the comments earlier. Do you know off the top of your head whether state allocations for, I don't know, I've got feedback, whether state allocations for substitutes were increased at all in the budget?
You know, I have to go back and look at the Donjonov page. I don't recall that them, that they were.
Has it been pretty stable in the last recent years? Or is there some kind of incremental increase embedded in the substitute allocation?
I would, I'm so sorry, I would really have to look. I can do, I can do a quick analysis.
It'd be helpful to know, just from the, from the start, from the state allocation side, how that has changed, if at all, in the last several years. Thank you. And then also, I've just been, in terms of report or comments, I've just been thinking a lot about communication, and just kind of the infrastructure for it, for the board. And email address is one thing, and our voicemails is another, but, um, just structurally, how we're set up in terms of communication. Email is a tool, I feel like, for folks who are at a desk all the time, or folks who have, like, I use email all day long at work, but email for us as the main mechanism for parents or community to contact us is pretty limited. So, I don't know what a solution is to that, but I just think that, in the context of, um, the recent strike and just communicating with the public back and forth, I just feel like, um, I need a different medium, but I don't know what that is. But, just, I'm just putting it out there for, as something for us, maybe all to have a conversation about down the road, or be thinking about, uh, what are some alternative ways of making contact that aren't just that flat as the email is, but, it's my only comment. Um, announcement of future board meetings? Oh, I'm sorry, we're getting started. Is there any report or comments from our student board member?
I don't have a report, but thanks for remembering me.
Oh, sorry. Um, we hope that you got off to a good start at school, and we look forward to all the updates that will come through the year and your feedback on things that we're discussing too.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again. Um, announcement of future board meetings, Thursday, September twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen. Six P.M., we will meet for our regular business meeting. Item number seventeen, executive session, there is none tonight.
We have a closed session.
Okay, there's none tonight, and with that, we'll move on to item number eighteen, and we are adjourned.